It was your grad. And it turns out it was.
Hey, Joe, I see you're connected to the hearing today for the Public Service Commission's application on ATC project. So let you know that we'll be taking public comment at 2:00 PM. Once we get started here checking people in and doing some preliminary discussion or some instructions I'll be giving so.
So that's the score.
At one time during the hearing, I'll call your name and I'll give your comment. That's why if you make comments, we'll take that sometime after two minutes.
Yeah, yeah, that's a little.
So everybody just want to get your attention for a second. We're not going to start at 2:00 PM. Just want to introduce myself. I'm Michael Newmark, the Administrative Law Judge for the Public Service Commission. It's the Public Service Commission that's running the hearing today. But I wanted to let you know as part of our process, we're here to take your comments. We're not going to be doing a presentation. Sometimes people get confused about that, but we want you to make your comment with all the information you need in order to make your best comment to the commission. So we do have commission staff here available for questions and ATC staff. So if you have questions, ask them now and then once you have your answers, then give your comment. Okay, so there's a little confusion the last hearing what this is all about. So I want to make sure people understand that process before. Once we get to 2:00 PM, I'll give you a little more information about how to participate. But most important thing though, is if you do want to speak today, fill out an appearance slip and check the yes, speak now, yes box. Then I'll get your appearance slip. It'll be brought up to me and I'll be able to call your name and have you come up and make a comment. Otherwise, you can write your comment on the form or submit your comment online. It all counts the same and the commissioners will be reading all the comments that come into the case. So so we'll get started too. I'll give you some more details once that time comes. Good afternoon, Joanne. I see you connected to the PSC hearing on ATC application. We'll get started around 2:00 PM to take public comments. Just let you know you're checked in for now.
Also.
I see someone connected to the PSC hearing with phone number ending in 233. So it's one of the looks like you're unmuted. So that's good. First, that's the first thing you need to check for. Otherwise, sit tight until 2:00 PM.
Thank you.
You know, if I can get to the name of the person calling, I'm going to add that to the Zoom and then we'll have that for the transcript as well. There's. So the person who's calling on the phone, can you give me your name, please?
Yes, this is attorney Alan Markovitz of Von Briesen and Roper.
Okay. So you're representing the landowners, right?
I'm representing several landowners, yes.
Yeah, okay. So so I can have you observe the hearing. There won't be an opportunity for the parties to participate at this time. That's for that's going to be on Thursday.
All right, so I thought this was an opportunity for some public comment, but we'll be listening.
Right, parties, but parties don't make public comments. So that's that's the distinction we make in the process. So parties will participate on Thursday's hearing and this is only to get comments from non-parties.
Okay, there was some question that was raised by Sophia about whether or not we are a party or just a public commentary.
Oh, I'm sorry. I guess I'm not aware of that.
I just want to be sure that one way or another, we get to communicate to the public service.
Yeah, so who do you represent?
Represent Corusak Family Limited Partnership and Entrustment Partners LLC.
And that, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing. Can you just repeat that?
Corusak Family Limited Partnership. And Entrustment Partners LLC.
Okay, yeah, I don't I don't recognize that as a party in the case, is that?
Yes, yes, I think we are not a party.
You're not a party, yes, that sounds correct. Okay, so I so I'm corrected. So yes, we can take your public comment today, not a problem. So let me just get your name again.
Alan, A-L-A-N, Markovitz, M-A-R-C-U-V-I-T-Z, Von Briesen and Roper.
Okay. And spell your last name one more time, a little slower. So I have M-A-R-V-U-B-I-T-Z.
No, M-A-R-C-U-V-I-T-Z.
Okay, perfect, thank you. All right, so just sit tight and we'll take your comment when it's your turn.
Thank you.
This is a big.
We registered. Was it? Okay, it's 2:00 PM, so we're going to get started. Let me. All right, we're going to start off the record. Can everybody hear me okay? It's kind of a small room. We have the PA system anyway, but that's trying to make sure everyone can hear. So I know we have a group of people discussing something in the back, but hopefully we can take care of our announcements here without distraction. So my name is Michael Newmark, the Administrative Law Judge for the PSC. We are here for public comments in ATC's application for the Mill Road to Granville Road Project, Transmission Line Project, we're calling it. So I work for the Public Service Commission. It's the state agency that has the authority to approve, deny, or modify the project. And ATC is the applicant for the project. So I know we have a number of landowners here and we have a number of parties in this case, which will be participating at Thursday's hearing. That's going to be conducted over Zoom and the public is welcome to attend through YouTube and observe the hearing. But here today, we're here to collect the public comments, public opinions on the case. So what we're doing here then is this is was these comments, we made part of the record in the case. And let me explain that the commissioners who run our agency will be making the decision, there's three commissioners. And they meet an open meeting and they vote on each issue in the case. So to make their decision, they need to only use the information we provide them in the record. Comments will be part of the record evidence. Also, the information that parties and the commission staff provide at the party hearing session will be part of the record in the case. So we mission will review all of that information and make its determinations about whether the line is needed and where it's going to go. You know, and accepting or modifying the different proposals. So. The, like I mentioned, there's three ways to comment. You can come up here, I'll have I'll call your name, I'll have you take a seat and make your comment in person. Or you can write your comment out on the form. We can give you more more pages if you need it and I'll take these back. I'll scan them into our system and provide them to the commission. Or you can write your comment online and there's details on how to do that right on the forum. So take the form with you, you can you can take this and go home and make a comment. Or you can mail us a comment, all that, all those options you have. But comments are due June 2nd, so you just need to have them received at the commission by June 2nd. So important thing is you're the audience of the decision makers essentially. The three commissioners will read your your comments. If you're coming up here live, I just wanted to ask you to speak slowly and clearly because we're transcribing what you say. And it's the comments that you speak today will be part of the transcript that will provide the commissioners. Written comments will be provided to to commissioners on our online system. So they'll be filed and they can and they'll review them online. So and the transcript will be online as well. So everything's everything's equal in the same in the same format, basically what commissioners see. So that's basically the ground rules, kind of give you an idea of what what to expect here and you know what, how your comments will be used. So I do have two appearance slips so far for in-person comments. So if you do want to comment, get your appearance slip. I guess at this point, just bring them up to me. I can call your name and get the comments and get you up here to make your comment. Otherwise, you can return your comments to the table that you got them from, your written comments. Okay, everyone ready to go? We have a couple of people online. So we are, we are taking comments by Zoom, so I'll be switching off between people in the room and people on Zoom. Also, I got live stream going as well, thanks. I got the live stream going as well, so I will be kind of looking at the screen a little bit, making sure everything's working. So if I'm not paying attention to 100% of the time, I apologize, but I need to juggle all these different things at once. So I hope that all makes sense to you. We can get started. So let's call our first person to come up here. Let's get on the record. It's Sandra M. Seymour. Yes, have a seat, please, sorry. I said I'm distracted by all these things here. We're gonna get the microphone close to you.
We will see now. You know what I forgot? My reading glasses.
Okay, no worries. That'll there?
Maybe, maybe not.
Let's take your time, no worries.
This is the most ridiculous thing that's never happened before.
So first I'm going to do is swear your hand and get your name for the record. So I ask you to raise your right hand. Other right hand, you swear or affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, and just give us your name and your comment, please.
My name is Sandra M. Seymour. I am landowner of a residential property at North 56, West 12971 Silver Spring Road in the village of Menominee Falls. This house and land.
Take your time.
Would be seriously impacted by construction of the new transmission line proposed by American Transmission Company. I oppose the location and the route, as well as the request for a large right-of-way or easement on my property. ATC is seeking a 75 to 100 foot right-of-way coming up to and over my house to construct a road that would devastate the majority of my property. While I did receive the December 19th, 2024 letter redoc at 137 CE212, my son reviewed the letter, the documents posted online at the PSC and understood the project as pertaining to me was limited to, according to the letter, quote, modifications to existing 138K via transmission lines, unquote, and saw no reason for concern as the existing power lines are across the road. I received, quote, "This letter to notify property owners near the proposed facilities. This notice appears designed to obfuscate, not inform. There is nothing alerting me that my property and my home are targeted for destruction. As of this writing, I have still not been directly notified of any designs on my property. There's been no follow-up. I don't know on what basis ATC plans to drill pilings on my lawn. I'm really not sure what I'm supposed to testify about. I haven't been told anything." I wonder how many other recipients of the December 19th letter noted because of the electrical substations to be upgraded saw near, which in my case means I knew they were not near and therefore are not present this afternoon defending their homes. What happens when they discover what I've discovered and what I know now? There are no utility easements on my property, so this is not a modification of existing lines. This is a new taking. Since the Silver Spring Road Bridge was removed decades ago, there's been no reason to worry about anything much happening on our road widening or whatever. A right-of-way cleared of trees and other vegetations would be devastating, unneed a destruction of private property, my property value, my quality of life. I have a heavily wooded property with many trees we planted and nurtured to provide shading, cooling, screening views, muffling road and business noise. These are long-term investments. Loss of these assets would negatively affect property value and my quality of life. For many years, an ash tree at the end of the driveway has been treated to protect Admiral Ashmore. I've also treated a number of American ounds or Dutch ound disease to maintain shade and cool. Just last fall, we added new evergreens to fill in the gap. A 75 to 100 foot right-of-way would take, oh, apple trees, pear trees, 50-year-old evergreens, a grove of American basswood, pear trees, 50-year-old evergreens. I said that, flowering crabs, magnolia, maples, oats, black willows, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. A cleared right-of-way of even a small dimension would open the property and house to traffic noise from Silver Spring Drive, from businesses across the river, destroy the screening from such views, and open the south face of the land and house to solar heat gain, meaning hotter summer temperatures, increased cooling cost, and would ruin my insulated, isolated property. Described in this book on page 73 as an urban wilderness on the Menominee River. The title is Exploring a Metropolitan Watershed, which is of course the Menominee River by photograph photographer, author Eddie Daniels. Did I say page 73?
Yes.
I have no information about the timeline. If landscaping trees, bulbs, the spring effluviums can be moved, that would be need to be done right now. And how does the ATC's cutting, poisoning, removal of vegetation affect what's left? There is a steep bluff on my property where it drops to the Menominee River, which would be negatively impacted and eroded as a result of moving mature trees, a couple of which we have believed to be a couple of hundred years old. We raised the erosion concern, but unfortunately have had no response from the PSC or heard much from the DNI. This bluff is nearly vertical where ATC proposes to cross the Menominee River. Are they going to bulldoze the bluff out of their way? Why couldn't ATC cross the river where there is already a road corridor at the former bridge site on this dead-end road? Also, there's a water course through my land where ATC plans construction. My property is highly contoured, hills and valleys, not flat like it looks on a map. Is ATC going to be able to bulldoze, fill in, regrade for their road building? My septic tank is within their proposed right-of-way. The septic bed just feet from the construction. If ATC's heavy equipment or construction vibrations break old pipes, my home will be uninhabitable. Because of the hilliness of my property and my lack of basement, I was unable to connect a sewer and water sometime in the 90s with Menominee Falls extended sewer connections to Old Silver Spring Road. My home therefore relies on a private well. What are 60-foot deep pilings going to do to my water table? It appears that ATC is planning to build two of their 100-foot steel towers and eight-by-12 concrete platforms just feet from my kitchen window. Is that legal? It certainly is vindictive. That is also where my septic tank is located. We've heard rumors that there are limits to how close power lines can be to a residence, but have been unable to track down and verify. I asked the PSC to consider the negative impact such close proximity to high-power electric lines affects health because those lines are known to, quote-unquote, sink. I'm an 89-year-old woman who has lived within five, six, nearly 60 years with homes with plans of passing my home on to my son as my legacy, who has nurtured and cared for the landscape much of his life. Seeing the property cleared as proposed and towers planted outside the kitchen window leaving mentally and emotionally devastating to me and definitely harmful to my well and septic system. So why doesn't ATC follow the existing transmission corridor of tall steel towers along the railroad tracks just north of my home and the businesses east of me? Or why doesn't ATC continue along Silver Spring Drive, one block south, a major thoroughfare with a wide median, ditch areas, large setbacks, and industrial properties where our private residence would not be impacted? There's no vegetation under existing power lines on the south side of Silver Spring Road, primarily parking lots. ATC maps show the line leaving back and forth across much of Silver Spring Drive a mile and a half west of me. So a jog away from my property is not an unreasonable request to prevent damaging my home and lifelong investment. And unfortunately for you, my night brain had a brainstorm last night and I checked it this morning. Furthermore, across the road from me is a river bluff in a three-tiered McAdam parking lot, lower section of which no company employees of the original occupant, Enerpat, or the current one, staff electric has ever parked. Land on the south side of Old Silver Spring Road slopes down gradually to the Menominee, whereas on my side, there's a steep vertical bluff. So why doesn't ATC consider that more accessible parking, empty parking lot as a site for their 100-foot tall steel towers? Another possible location is a vacant for the last year manufacturing plant across the road from me with a large parking lot east of the Butler Water Company. Why doesn't ATC consider that vacant lot as a possible tower site? Other than the fact that ATC likely doesn't want to deal with the big boys, so to speak, just powerless homeowners like little old ladies like me. And, and this is really serious in my opinion, directly across the road from me is a steep uphill slope, top of which is the Butler Water Company. That slope is an underground reservoir of 400,000 gallons of drinking water for the village of Butler. What will happen there if heavy construction equipment rumbling around my front yard destroys that rather old construction of 1960? Brains needed to raise two 100-foot tall steel towers outside my kitchen will certainly do somewhat, some damage in my uneducated opinion to that reservoir across the street from me. I hope as a result of these hearings, my questions will be completely answered, alternatives even more importantly considered, and failing that is scheduled that gives homeowners enough time, at least a growing season, to make adjustments to their landscapes, relocate from the demolition zone before the public commission allows this proposal to continue. Thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Morgan, wherever you are, my high school speech teachers, I feel some.
Let me, so let's just take the beat for a second before you before you leave. Yeah, give me a copy what you said first.
Thank you.
And I do want to take a picture of the document, the book that you provided. So you did, so it's a book entitled Urban Wilderness: Exploring a Metropolitan Watershed by Eddie Daniel, E-D-D-E-E. So I just take a picture of that.
It's a wonderful little urban wilderness in our corner of Menominee Falls. One of nature's architectures that much improves our nails.
Let's get to 73. Think off the record at this point.
We watch the salmon spawning.
Hang on, keep going. You watch the salmon spawn, say that again?
Yeah.
Really, wow.
The DNI was very excited when I called the first year after they closed some dam down in Milwaukee and the salmon were able to swim north again. They don't survive, but anyways, they spawn.
So we're going to go off the record just for a second and I was just wanted you to point out where. So it's page. so it's page seventy-three, and then you said that there was a picture as well. Oh, no.
An even stranger artifact disturbs the Sylvan character of this centered and aggressively is kind of a charcoal grave. It's a nineteen thirties grave.
Okay, and this is your property?
This is our property. This, all these paragraphs refer to my property.
Ah, I see.
Take a picture of it? Is there a copy machine here or let's borrow the book and copy it?
Is there a indication of that it's your property that they're talking about on here?
Well, it's the grave and the canoe. There's a canoe there. I'll send you a picture of it.
So it just refers to items that are on your property? So it doesn't give an address or something? Okay, okay.
It talks about the canoe at the bottom. By the river, it talks about the grave.
Okay. Okay, that's good. Well, I have this. And I'll put, what I'll do is, you know, I think what I'm going to do, I think we have what we need. I'm going to include this with your comment and attach pictures of, of the pages of the book.
Do you have pictures of the canoe and my grave?
Um, I don't, well, I, you know, I can, I can, I'll give you my card. You can send it to me and I'll see if I can incorporate it into the record. Not going to guarantee it because I haven't seen it yet. Okay. But.
That's my canoe and that's my grave.
Okay, no, I believe you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks. And don't forget. Yes, and.
Thank you.
You've got all your glasses, right?
All my glasses.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so we have Jeffrey Seymour. I swear in first. You swear or affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Give us your name and comment.
My name is Jeffrey Seymour. Good stuff there. Okay, my name is Jeffrey Seymour. I am here to speak in support of Sandra Seymour, a residential property owner on Silver Spring Road in the village of Menominee Falls. I believe it's sign and L that helps, whose land and house would be seriously impacted by the taking proposed by American Transmission. Nothing, uh, she did receive the Public Service Commission letter dated December nineteenth. Uh, I have to say, this is not my first experience with some sort of notice arriving between Thanksgiving and Christmas when people are focused on other things. Um, I did review the letter. I understood the project was limited to, and I quote, modifications to existing one thirty-eight kilovolt transmission lines. Uh, there are power lines on the other side of the street, although I don't think they're one hundred and thirty-eight K. And again, I quote, this letter is to notify property owners near the proposed facility. Uh, so this is really not notification. This is a deception. Uh, it's not doing the public any service, anything, because it's really a lie. Nothing in this letter says your property is going to be taken from you and destroyed. Nothing about a one-hundred-foot right-of-way for building a road that will cover much or most of the property. We only became aware when agents representing ATC arrived at my house in Mequon in mid-March. The letter dated January thirty-first, and that's not a joke. They wanted, uh, my permission to access a property I don't own. Uh, so, um, I asked several times why they were asking me, but they did not answer. I asked about power lines. I asked about poles, and they said they didn't know anything about that. So I don't know if they're being dishonest or just that dumb. I was told ATC wanted twenty feet, which was blatantly untrue. I have to wonder how many other people have no idea what's going to happen to them because they have been deceived and lied to. A business up the road, an official in our village, well, her village planning department thought it would be an underground cable. A neighboring village official thought it was wooden poles. Uh, other comments on file with the PSC note, um, a lack of accurate information related to the project. Uh, so it's not just me that's been a victim of this scam. Uh, to me, this dishonesty is reason enough for the project to be opposed by, well, anyone. As of today, the actual property owner has still not been directly informed of any designs on her private property, but we're supposed to show up at this public hearing to give our input. Uh, my family's property is not waste space in need of improving by bulldozing and paving. Uh, this is property my family has lived on and I have helped care for for more than fifty years. We've enhanced the property to welcome wildlife. With my father, who has since passed, we have planted a native Midwest prairie meadow that is now doomed. I sweep the lawn for snakes and frogs before mowing the grass, so you can imagine how I feel about evildoers running a road over the land and across the front patio. Um, there is a steep bluff. You've heard this, I know, but I just want to move it forward. You've heard of a steep bluff where the property drops to the Menominee River, which would be negatively impacted and eroded by construction work and removal of native vegetation and mature trees. At least one of which I believe, I have reason to believe is two-hundred-year-old oak tree, based on similar trees I have seen dated, and another's probably of similar age. When I was young, this oak tree had a piece of barbed wire sticking out of it, still in there somewhere. Uh, when this land was farmed or grazed, that tree was too big to be eaten by livestock or too small to be cut for wood, but it was the right size for a fence post. Uh, and since then, this hillside has not been grazed, mowed, or trampled by human destruction. I don't know if you can talk about old growth trout lily, but there is a colony, spreads across much of the property, um, and is almost entirely within the path of destruction. Uh, the steep bluff is the only place it flowers. I don't know if that's because of association with other native plant roots and mycorrhizal networks with oaks, basswoods, other shrubs. Uh, but this is a redmond population from God's green creation. When we hear so much about the loss of habitat, the loss of species, and the degradation of environmental quality, these few remaining places, these last standing individuals we need to leave in place. We have work to keep out unwanted problematic plants like buckthorn and garlic mustard, which would easily repopulate following a massive termination for road construction. ATC promises to restore the corridor, but only to good condition. Seriously, how do you restore a two-hundred-year-old oak tree to good condition after you build a road over it? Does the commission, uh, know why the new line doesn't continue to follow existing transmission corridors along the railroad tracks without cutting new corridors and slumify new areas of our community? Does the commission, there's a commission know why the line does not continue to follow Silver Spring Drive, which is a major thoroughfare, wide medians, ditch areas, large setbacks, and industrial properties, and appears to be the direction the line is ultimately going? Maybe as a result of this hearing, the Public Service Commission will correct its sins of omission and act to ensure complete and correct information is given to all impacted property owners while they still have time to react. Transmission lines will be restricted to existing corridors and our homes and our values will not be destroyed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll take your, um, I'll take this document and put it with your parents' letter and make sure we got all the words.
Yeah.
Oh, that's okay. Well, yeah, we'll just, we'll be able to check some of the, I think, the species names.
Oh, okay.
Other things like that. Yeah. Thanks very much. All right, we'll take one more person from in the room, and then we're going to switch to three people on Zoom. We have about, well, there's not that many, maybe five people right there so far. So, uh, James Mathis. All right, swear in, raise your right hand, swear or affirm, tell the truth, hold truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
Name and comment.
So my name's, uh, James Mathis, um, property owner over on Davidson Road uh, along the existing ATC right-of-way, hundred-and-twenty-five-foot right-of-way. Um, sorry, I might be a little disjointed, uh, because of the fact I didn't know the format of this, and I wasn't nearly as prepared as the Seymour's were. They, they did an excellent job, and I think your English teacher, Mrs. Seymour, would be very, very proud. So I have, uh, very similar comments, although maybe with a little different twist and some detail with regards to the PSC's and ATC's approach to communication with the landowners. Um, I believe that it's been very difficult to get information and to understand the scoping of the project. This is the first opportunity that we have to actually see ATC folks and ask questions. And hopefully we do have some more time to delve into things, and, and this is a concern because the communication process, as the Seymour's we're talking about, has been rather, um, difficult and seems to be fast-tracked to keep landowners and municipalities, municipalities, and there's big parts, uh, of the project that impact municipality right-of-ways. So, sorry for this, but to be most concise, I'm going to read, um, some information I passed on to, I think it's Adam Inkwell, who's the docket supervisor, uh, for this project.
Okay, so let me just interrupt you for a sec. When you're reading, just be, read slowly. People tend to speed up when they're reading.
I will.
Okay, thanks.
Um, unfortunately, I don't have, well, you could take a copy. This is not an extra copy.
Okay.
Um, as we discussed earlier this week, and this is dated April eighteenth of this year, I would ask for the PSC's consideration for being added to docket one-three-seven CE-two-twelve as a party with intervenor status to provide the background for this request. And this will also provide information with regards to, um, the approaches that the PSC and ATC has taken in communication with the landowners. I was active in inquiring about the scope of the project, starting as soon as I received the original ATC map of the project by calling for assistance and speaking with ATC Representative Victoria on ten-seven-twenty-four. Victoria is a nice person, but she was basically an out-of-state contractor answering questions that people sent in. I, at that point in time, did ask for scoping information. She came back to me and said, it's not possible, it's not available. Uh, the twelve-nineteen-twenty-four letter, providing the information regarding general project description, project location, project need, state and federal agency jurisdiction, environmental assessment, information, and contacts, was signed by Kyle Phelps, Environmental Analysis and Review Specialist, Advanced ADB, um, or advisor. The envelope also included a black and white map and the PSC notice of proceeding. Included in the notice at the bottom of page one um, stated the public participation service date of twelve-nineteen. This meant the cutoff was one-one-twenty-five. So in order to become an intervenor during the Christmas holidays with the delay in mailing within the PSC staff at the Christmas time, because we've received other mailings that take up to five or six days to reach us from Madison. And then you have a January first cutoff date for intervenor. It's like impossible. You know, it, it's just, we want to get this stuff out before the end of the year, and we want to be able to hit this ground running in twenty-twenty-five. I focused on, when I received this twelve-nineteen-twenty-four letter, I focused on how does this project impact our property? Because as I'm sure you've seen from this, and indeed it's the same map that ATC representatives are using today. It says in, and it doesn't reference segment D. And this whole process is based on segments that are never defined, except if you go deep into a level of understanding, you wouldn't, when it just says on our yellow segment D section, approximately maybe six miles from the Mill Road Substation to Arcadian Substation, upgrade line and replace some structures. Okay, that sounds great. However, it doesn't say that as you go deeper into it, the right-of-way will be going from the current hundred-and-twenty-five feet to a hundred-and-seventy, a hundred-and-seventy-two feet on a proposed basis. So there's no way to understand. So you're trying to understand what is going on on our property. How is it going to impact us? So I called Kyle as the listed agency contact for environmental matters to get additional project information that Victoria was not able to provide. So now we've, that's in October. Now we're in, uh, December when I got that letter and made the call. Um, this whole communication process took a long time due to Christmas and New Year's holidays. Kyle did call me back on or around January eighth, twenty-twenty-five. So just as everything is slowing down for the holidays, obviously the PSC also slowed down. I reached, uh, and at that time, he informed me of the one-ten, January tenth, twenty-twenty-five submission deadline for environmental commons, which I had missed in my review of the PSC correspondence, given my project scope focus. Immediately on January eighth, twenty-twenty-five, I reached out to the city of Brookfield, planning and engineering. They had a bit of knowledge of receiving the letter, but I talked to Tom Greizer, the Director of Public Works, and Teresa Craven, um, who is in the area of development. And she, uh, was very nice, and, you know, everybody I've talked with at the city and also at the town have been very cooperative. Um, and the town of Brookfield really had the same, a bit of recollection, but no knowledge of the project. And then, uh, I learned from Kyle about placement and R O W, right-of-way information. And that's where I first learned that there would be a possibility that the right-of-way may be expanded. I believe during the various communications, he told me I missed a deadline at that point in time for becoming a party. It was after January first. Given my gained understanding of the project and timing involved, uh, involved due to Christmas holidays, I placed a call to Spencer Watson, the PSC docket coordinator. This was in early January, to see if I could still become a party with intervenor status, given my needed focus on getting my environmental comments in. So, you know, I'm pushing to hit a deadline, and I had to wait a little bit to get a hold of him. I made that call on January thirteenth, but he never called me back. He's never called me back. I've never had any, if you're in the room, you know, you should recognize my name. But I sent emails, I called back, no response from the PSC staff. Um, it was upon our conversation this week that I became more fully, and this is again to Adam Inkwell, able to realize the meaning to me of becoming a party and intervenor to this topic. Therefore, I ask for your assistance in attempting to become a party with intervenor status. And as a landowner, I feel an obligation to stay informed and involved, and I feel I've demonstrated my interest and ability to contribute your conversations, environmental comments I already shared with the PSC and the project. Um, I did receive, and I don't want to pull out my phone and take time, but I did receive, um, uh, a call or email from a Mrs. or Ms. Rogers, I think her name, an attorney with the PSC staff. And, uh, she basically said that, um, there was going to be a public hearing coming up. So I've, and she provided me some information with regards to the legal process to become an intervenor and ask for a late intervenor, um, status. Um, however, her letter also said there's this public hearing coming up, and I just decided to wait until I had a chance to see what this process was and where we're at before I officially submitted, as I think it might actually go to you, Michael, uh, my request to become a late intervenor. And so that kind of handles the background of, um, how this could have been handled differently. Um, I would like to now transition into, um, some other things that I think are noteworthy. And that's that as you dig in, and I don't know if other people have looked at it, but it's the PDF of the forty uh, slides that basically show the mapping. Um, they're very difficult to interpret because they, they do not show the existing line. It does show the pipeline, and, you know, we did on our property go through that process with ANR with regards to building that pipeline. And yes, we did have, um, fragmites. Uh, we went from Joe Pie monarch-friendly, uh, to fragmites in, uh, which is an invasive species as a result of that project. We lost several springs, and we too have a, a small water course from a spring on our property. And, um, there will be big issues moving large construction equipment through the tremendous amount of fragmites that was left behind after the A and R project. And we have experience with ATC trimming and A and R doing work on the catho or, um, doing work on the catho or um the an- cathode, uh not the cathode, but the sacrificial zinc plates that they put on the pipeline. And there's very difficult environmental discussions that we've had with various contractors, because these are not people that are employees of ATC or in A and R, they're all contractors. And so it gets to be very difficult going through their environmental people. Uh, they'll, they'll be nice upfront and then they tend to shut you down. Um, the other environmental concern that we have, of course, is that we live on a very steep hill. There's, it's at the bottom of Poplar Creek, basically it runs along Poplar Creek there. And uh it's the narrowest point um for the entire run um to get across Poplar Creek. Um, so it's a natural area, and that's probably why it's called Davidson Road and why the Davidsons built their original estate house uh up on top of the hill. And the problem that you have is that, as I understand it, the additional forty-five feet may be thrown off to the east and not be split. I know the environmental assessment, I believe, says that it'll be split evenly, but the proposed maps uh I do not believe show a even split of that additional forty-five feet. Let's just keep it easy. Um, so it doesn't show a a a split, it's thrown off to the east, not east and west. And when you take the land, that extra forty-five feet is not the hypotenuse of the triangle going up the hill. It's straight into the hill. So as a result, it becomes very close to the houses and will take down what I would estimate to be a three-hundred-year-old oak tree, similar to what Mr. Seymour spoke about. The other thing that I didn't put in my environmental concerns that I think is true, because if you think of Lake Michigan to Barker Road, how many flyways or greenways are there? And I believe that that transmission line and the environmental impact of taking away bird resting places, it will be significant. And the example I would use is that oak tree. And I judge how we're doing for spring and fall by the fultures that roost in the tree as they come through. And so we have to understand that while the EA says that it's minimal, you know, dust and noise and all that kind of thing. We do have the singing of the lines, we have the impact on damp days of being next to something metal and getting a shock. And I don't think that there's been good consideration communication. I talked with the general manager of the Lexus operation in, next to the corners, just to the east of the corners, because it's proposed that the lines will, there's alternative, alternative because of the corners being built there and right of the right of ways that the new line may go across their car parking lot. And on damp, damp days, they're gonna be getting shocks off of their cars. And I, I just don't think that it's been fully understood, and even the PSC staff today cannot tell us which structures what will be up, how the line will be upgraded. I've heard that it might go and use, then this is from somebody at the town, that the line may use or the conductors may be the same. But that just additional voltage is gonna be put through the hundred and thirty-eight or whatever kilovolt side. And because it's already got a three forty-five and it's a double circuit, and I don't understand all the electrical engineering, but we have an issue that um the same conductors may be used. But nobody knows. You can't, there's nobody to ask that question of. And I don't believe with the PSC doesn't know. And I did read some of the information provided by Anna Rocheler, an engineer. And I found her, she, I'm sure she's, she's a wonderful person. But she did not have the depth of understanding that I felt was appropriate for the PSC and communicated in her testimony. Because I read her testimony, and I did not feel that she had the grasp of the project necessary to provide a recommendation to the PSC. And I think that's an overall problem that the PSC staff has in being able to advise the PSC. There's also the whole question of, and indeed, I feel bad for the Seymour's, boy, you, it sounds like you have a wonderful property. I might come and visit you in October to see this salmon coming up. Um, but it, it just seems that the landowners in this process need to have some room to discuss and to negotiate versus hard and fast. We're gonna clear a hundred and seventy-two feet. To me, that's just bad policy. And I'll close with one other communication. And this was to, this is from January eleventh, so this is the city had no idea, the city had no idea that there was environmental comments that were required. Which is to me, you know, if you're not working, if ATC isn't working with the municipalities and knowing, and I know there was an October meeting, you know, there's some discussion at the town. I can't find anybody that has had a conversation with ATC about this project in um the city. And so I was communicating and I said, here are my submitted comments to the environmental concerns that I had. Um, I am particularly focused on tower, tower design alternatives that the PSC should be considering. I've laid out below a number of environmental concerns and other feelings I have. With what A E P, and that's American Electric Power, that's a huge east, east Ohio and east coast power company has created with its new design for three hundred and forty-five KV double-circuit lines, rushing to a conclusion on the ATC standard of monopole. When a new alternative might be avail- available, offering better aesthetics, smaller right-of-ways and less stray voltage and fewer decibels, the singing that you mentioned, Mrs. Seymour needs to be considered and more deeply researched than my basic internet search. So I just went on the internet and said, what kind of poles do you use for a uh two forty or three forty-five KV double circuit? I found them. Yes, it might be new, but as ratepayers, we must demand forward-thinking alternatives and not be forced to live with what has been done in the past to the detriment of our environment where we live. Also, with what Minnesota is doing, so there's also a new design and alternative up in Minnesota. It seems to me ATC is just into the right-of-way land grab because they can and they have a plausible excuse for the city whose ATC right-of-ways will also be impacted as infrastructure upgrades are considered. There are many power lines in our community. And doing it right with this very quick and almost below-the-radar project notification will set a standard and expectation with ATC and we of formality and community involvement. Instead, they seem to be hiding within the impenetrable dockets of the Wisconsin PSC and FERC. I don't know if FERC is involved in this project. I, I can't, we don't know that. It's, I, I believe they would be because it's interstate and it ties into the whole MISO uh system. ATC should have been talking with the city of Brookfield a year ago. And you as staff should not have to depend on me coming to, coming in the day comments need to be submitted. This type of approach may be legal, but does not foster a spirit of cooperation. Just think about the two six-plus sixty-year-old natural gas pipelines, that's my estimated age. I think they're probably closer to seventy-five, actually. Running through the Brookfield neighborhoods we discussed yesterday. There's some over by the city hall, towards the city hall, that are very old, that are in operation. They will be need to be, they will need to be replaced with likely larger pipelines at higher pressures in the future as our energy policy moves towards more natural gas fire, power generation. For example, I believe the new Elm Road coal-fired generation units will be repowered to natural gas. And the Germantown Station will be expanded via more combustion turbines or internal combustion engines, all powered by natural gas. It seems to me, just as there are not, not, just as there is not enough transmission line capacity, there will be natural gas capacity and reliability needs for pipelines too. I believe that it would be very inappropriate to expand the right-of-ways. I understand that southeastern Wisconsin, you could say our entire nation, is in need of good energy infrastructure. However, I think it should be openly discussed, not hidden, and give people time to communicate. I did consider going door-to-door for the forty or fifty or sixty houses that are in segment D and dropping off a note saying, do you know what's coming your way? Have you seen the right-of-way going through your house and the clearing that's gonna take you right to the doorstep of those power lines? That should have happened. This, I, I mean, I didn't do it because of the fact that I wanted to see what this process was like. I think that there's gonna be, uh, and I talked today with the city attorney for Brookfield. She said, well, we've been notified. I said, well, Jenna, do you know that the right-of-ways are going to a hundred and seventy, a hundred and seventy-two feet? She didn't. So I think that we have to get the involvement, the PSC doesn't necessarily have to deny the request, but it has to look at the input that's received and there should be, I expected to see maps appear and a, you know, like a roadshow when they do the expressway expansions, how they put and build public policy based on communication. Thank you very much for the time. I uh appreciate the opportunity and I'll be submitting my request to become a late intervenor to you, Michael. I appreciate your consideration of that.
Right. Well, thank you very much. Thanks for your comment. All right, let's switch to Zoom. I know Joe Angle has been uh, joined us before the hearing began. Uh, so Joe, if you wanna unmute your uh microphone and turn on your camera, if you'd like to give a comment, let me know. Toing off the record. So Joe, can you hear me? Okay, we'll sw- switch to Joan.
Sorry, I have no comment on at this time. Thank you, though.
No comment, okay.
Thank you.
How about uh Joanne? You had connected early on. Did you have a comment? I'm not hearing from you. Okay, so we also have um Alan Markovitz, connected by phone. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, so I'm having a little trouble hearing you, and I don't know if there's a way, if you're on speakerphone, maybe just go to your um head, head uh handset instead.
Is that, is that better?
Yes, excellent. Great. Okay.
Okay.
So, okay, so.
Handle this right, sure.
Let's begin then. I'll swear you in, raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm? Tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And can you state your name for the record, please?
Alan Markovitz of Von Briesen and Roper, speaking on behalf of our clients.
And can you just give us your client's name?
Corosec Family Limited Partnership and Entrustment Partners LLC, Menominee Falls.
Okay, just hanging off the record. Did you need that spelled? Yeah, yeah, let's just spell out the uh, the first party, please, or the first uh client.
Corosec, K O R O S E C, Family Limited Partnership.
Okay. And the other one was?
Entrustment.
Entrustment Partners LLC.
Okay, great, we got that. Okay. All right, let's get back on the record, ready to go. So give us your comment, please.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak briefly. Uh, we have previously filed a letter dated April twenty-fourth, twenty-five with the Public Service Commission and have had an opportunity for one conference with Staff Counsel Sophia Rogers. Today, we only want to take a few minutes to confirm our client's objections that that part of the project which seeks to place a new easement and transmission lines across the front of their Sean Circle Menominee Falls properties. They already have a one hundred and thirty-five-foot wide easement through the rear section of their property. Our clients and other owners, as well as the village of Menominee Falls, are all of the firm opinion that the proposed new easement on Sean Circle will not only interfere with current operations, but also the planned expansion plans, leading to the eventual need for these businesses to relocate from Menominee Falls. I want to point out that the future was clearly on the minds of the village of Menominee Falls when preparing this area for development in nineteen eighty-one, when approving and recording a new certified survey map, number forty forty, a copy of which we have previously provided to staff, which requires all future installation of electric transmission lines to be placed underground. Our clients are asking the Public Service Commission to require ATC to use its available alternate route or routes to avoid the impact that would be caused to their properties that are part of the industrial complex in Menominee Falls. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for your comment. So I'm gonna mute your phone now and feel free to stay on the line. All right, so Sheila Schmitz, would you like to comment? I see if I'm unmuted. Uh, can you turn your camera on? It's not off the record. It's gonna ask you to start your video. Should be able, there should be a button there you can push. There we go, perfect. Okay, I see you there. Can you hear me okay? Sheila, can you hear me? Uh, yeah, I'm not hearing you. I see you're unmuted, but there may be something muted on your headset or on your computer that's preventing me from hearing you. Okay, well, I'm gonna do is uh, I'm gonna just, just keep trying. I'm gonna switch to somebody else, but keep trying to um get your microphone working and we'll, we'll get back to you. Jeffrey, Jeffrey Leota, did you wanna speak?
Your Honor, I represent a party intervenor. I'm just monitoring this, and so I, it's my understanding, I'm not allowed to speak.
That's correct. I maybe I forgot. Thanks very much for letting me know. All right, so I think I'm gonna try Joanne one more time. Joanne, uh, did you wanna speak? You need to unmute? Okay, well, so we're gonna switch to people in the room as Sheila uh looks at her equipment here and tries to get connected. Um, you, you, I, I might suggest you wanna uh disconnect and try reconnecting again. Maybe that'll do the trick, but we'll be here for uh for some time. Here we have at least two people, two more comments to take, and uh so definitely be here within for ten minutes, maybe more. Uh, but if you wanna disconnect and then try again, that might help uh get your microphone working. All right. So back in the room, uh, Robert W. Roth.
Can you hear me now?
Ah, there we go, yes. Just sit tight, we'll take one more. No, go ahead, you already walked over here.
Sorry.
You're good. We'll just, we'll take one person here, uh, have a seat, please. And then we'll switch over to you, Sheila. All right, sir, I'll swear you in first. Do you swear or affirm? Tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, name and comment, please.
My name is Bob Roth, R O T H.
Go ahead.
And I live in the town of Brookfield, not too many houses away from Mr. Mathis. Boy, these last two people are a tough act to follow, so we'll have to see how this goes. Um, I'm a two-time loser. Having my homestead condemned and put through a nine hundred P S, nine hundred pounds per square inch, thirty-inch natural gas transmission pipeline in the conservancy that abuts my backyard in nineteen ninety-eight. And now the taking of anywhere from twenty-three and a half to forty-seven more feet of permanent clear-cut easement by ATC, encroaching into a primary timbered forest on a hillside up to forty feet higher than the floor of the conservancy where the work is being done. Near the edge of that taking at twenty-three and a half, gone at forty-seven because I have no idea where they're really going to put the easement to the, the east, the current lines, is a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy-five-year-old primary oak tree on a lot full of them. And it will destroy the ambience of my home. What is troubling about the ATC project in, in general is that about nineteen forty-eight, ATC's predecessor condominiums managed to get a hundred and twenty-five-foot easements from the farmers and rural folks living there at the time. Um, let's hear that again. That's a hundred and twenty-five-foot easement for one set of poles. And now ATC wants to expand that easement to a hundred and seventy-two feet in what is now a built-up residential and commercial area. I'm in section D, the lower half of it. Uh, there is no doubt in my mind that they aren't really planning on putting new poles, or they may put two poles. It isn't clear, isn't clear at all what they're actually going to try to install in my area. But what is clear is that no condominium has a constitutional right to ask for more easement space if they don't need it. You can shake, rattle, and toss the current proceedings and there's just no evidence of the actual need for more space in that D area. Fly a drone, small plane, helicopter, take a picture from space and you'll see that the poles and trellises that exist on the line now fit very nicely, thank you, within a hundred and twenty-five-foot area and were built that way within a hundred and twenty-five-foot area. There's not a word about temporary taking for workspace or otherwise in any of the proposals that I'm aware of in my section. So these are all, uh, permanent widenings. In short, I think ATC is angling to extend the easement area in order to have more room for more lines in the future. If that is its intent, it violates both state and federal constitutions which prescribe takings for public use to the needs of the moment, not the future. The fundamental idea is necessary to prevent government and private industry condominiums from overreaching in their takings and thereby truly destroying the property rights and liberty of those that live next to utility corridors. That extra forty-seven feet should not be allowed. Uh, here's some other examples of why it's not such a good idea. There's a homestead four thousand south of mine and the permanent easement will run right straight through the middle of the house. North of me in the city of Brookfield, again, some of the easement area as extended runs through more houses. And this really was something to see. At the corners of Brookfield and across at Poplar Creek Road, one of the most notable buildings in the area, Craig Husar's Diamond Store, would have its east-facing wall condemned and located in the easement as shown on the maps. These are foundational takings of a permanent character that boggle a mind. They create all kinds of future problems for landowners and just aren't necessary, including probable total takings of otherwise perfectly sound residences and businesses. I would like to see ATC, excuse me, I'd like to see the PSC block this expansion. One more thing. The high-pressure gas pipeline, less than two hundred feet from my back deck, is a serious problem for ATC. Building high-voltage electric transmission lines directly over high-pressure national gas pipelines is generally discouraged due to significant safety and operational risks. There are several studies floating around in the industry that highlight this sort of thing. To mitigate these risks, experts recommend maintaining a safe distance between high-voltage lines and gas pipelines. A two thousand thirteen engineering report by Parsons Brinkerhoff, B R I N C K E R H O F F advised routing pipelines at least five hundred meters away from high-voltage lines to prevent interference effects. If such separation isn't feasible, implementing mitigation systems and continuous monitoring is essential. I took the time to look up the actual article in the Brinkerhoff report and it said something else. Uh, this is from the article at the Union Times, Albany, New York. But the Parsons Brinkerhoff report also recommended that before mitigation systems were accepted, it should be demonstrated to government regulators that no other routes are practical. There are other routes. While there may not be explicit federal regulations prohibiting and co-locating high-voltage lines and high-pressure gas pipelines, industry standards and best practices strongly advise against it. Organizations like the Pipeline Safety Trust advocate for dedicated energy transmission corridors, electrical over here, gas over here, to minimize risks associating with the electromagnetic interference and physical damage. In summary, the co-location of the high-voltage electric lines over high-pressure natural gas pipelines is fraught with risks that can compromise both infrastructure integrity and separation and human safety. Whatever you do, please consider denying the forty-seven additional feet of easement taking in your final reports. And if you have the ability to do so, somebody mentioned the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission and it has, it plays a role here. I'd like to see the state of Wisconsin force the owners of the high-pressure gas pipeline to close the lines during this, the serious construction activities going on by ATC. It's just too dangerous to the lives of the workers and citizens that live along the right-of-way to not do so. Thank you for your time. I will file my paperwork by the second.
Okay, so, so you no need to hand that in. Okay, I did want to get something from you, though, and you can include this in your comment, your written comment if you wish, but it would be helpful um, to have the address of the property.
Five two five, West Ravenswood Hills Circle.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you very much. All right, Sheila, if you can hear me, you muted again, so didn't want you to do that. Can you turn it back on? We'll, uh,
Yeah, I figured it out.
Okay, perfect. Great. I hear you loud and clear. All right, let me swear you in, raise your right hand. Swear or affirm? Tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, give us your name and comment. You need to spell your name for us, too.
Sheila Schmitz, S H E I L A, S C H M I T Z.
Perfect. Okay, go ahead.
So I'm calling, I'm actually here on behalf of Arden Property Group. We have a, um, a senior facility near Hickory Street. The address is W one ninety-seven and forty-nine fifty. And I had, I guess, my comments are minimal compared to everyone else. I just, I've had several conversations with the ATC and what the structure, because we have one right next to our property that is being built and what it entails. Um, the owners of the company are just a little surprised, I guess, like everyone else in the room has mentioned the lack of detail and information provided. And that was, how can the PSC conclude this project is not expected to cause significant environment, environmental effects when after several phone calls that I've had with the ATC, they do not even have for sure what the design's going to be or how tall these towers will be. So that was the only comment I really had. How can they make a determination of that when they don't even have all the information yet? That's next to our building.
Okay, well, thanks for the comment. We will, I don't have an answer for you, but I think it's good that you're asking the question. The commissioners will review that as part of the review of the record, so it's important to know that there's some ambiguity there.
Okay.
Okay. All right, well, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, so this is my last appearance slip for someone participating in the room. If anyone else does want to speak, get me your slip. And, uh, if anyone else, I know people were writing comments out, but, um, so right now we have Anthony Fetting, F E T T I G.
Yeah, I think in consideration of time, I'm just going to send the invite, you know, as long as that's the same.
Yes, it'll be, well, email doesn't work, so, yeah. Of course, yeah, so an online comment will work, yeah, up until the January, up until June second, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, we, but we, we have plenty of time, so don't worry about, if you want to speak now, it's fine.
I'll, I'll just do it on.
Okay. So, so are you Anthony or is it? Oh, you are, okay. Wasn't true. All right, anyone else for a comment in the room? Yeah, come on up. People can feel free to leave if you've made a comment already. You don't, don't feel you need to stay, but certainly are welcome to stay. Okay, so we have, it's Chris Michaels.
Yes.
Yes. All right, so, um, so I recognize the name. And there's a Michaels, it's the, the, I don't know, wait a second, I'm talking about a different case. Hang on, let's go off the record for a second. You're, you're, yeah, nothing, not in this case. Okay, great, great. It's a similar name. All right, so we just have you checked that out? I have a lot of stuff going on, so apologize for that. All right, so Chris Michaels. So let me swear you in first. You swear or affirm? Tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
All right, so state your name and give your comment, please.
Name is Chris Michaels, M I C H E L S. Kind of have the same feelings or in shock about what's going on. Uh, I, I own a piece of property on Lily Road. That's about a six-acre piece property that runs along railroad tracks. Address, west one four zero, north five nine oh nine, Lily. Um, I did receive the letter in December, which was basically forum letter for everybody to get and really didn't give you any information. The next contact I had was, uh, that they needed to get on the property and do borings. Um, they needed permission to enter the property because we have a lot of data. And I said, sure, what's going on? You know, it's all about the transmission lines. Uh, they came and did a boring on the property and I asked information. They really couldn't give me any information what was going on, which I agreed to have the boring was in their easement. Um, later on, I was, a representative of ATC, um, contacted me um, about moving material on our property um, in the easement or the right-of-way or their easement area. And, um, I said, so what we have going on, we're in a topsoil business, so we store materials there. And he asked me to move all the materials. And I said, well, it's ten thousand yard material there. Uh, it's, and I said, what, what says that I have to move the materials? They basically stated, oh, we have no information that says you have to move the materials, but we'd like you to move the materials because we're going to be putting in another um, pillar or base for the power lines. And I asked for more details. He couldn't get any more details. And he said, by the way, they're probably going to be asking for a large, they may or may not ask for a larger easement through the property. Uh, the problem, if they increase the easement, it would basically render the property useless. The easement runs right through the center of the property, the long ways through the property, takes up most of the property. So, and, and I've reached out and they said they may or may not take it. They said I have to have the material out. Nothing in writing, just a phone call. I have to have all this material and everything ready for them at the end of August. That was it. I don't know what we're supposed to do with the business. Are we supposed to keep going? I have to, I have no information whatsoever what they're doing. And I would assume that at this stage of the game, they know exactly what they're doing because all this material has to be ordered. They know what's going where. They have all these bids set up. They know what their, their costs are. So it's just, everybody's in the dark. All I have to say.
So I'm just curious, they said to move the materials because of the testing or just for the project itself and you don't know? Okay. I'm getting any answer for that.
And I asked them, basically, do, what states, I, in the past, we have had vegetation issues or when they come through and they do their vegetation clearing underneath the power lines. And there is some documentation that says that that has to be cleared. We had issues with the, uh, city of Menominee Falls because they needed landscape plans. And then we would fight back saying, well, ATC says we can't, states we can't have any landscaping underneath the power lines. So we had a pass from the city of Menominee Falls for landscaping purposes. But we asked them in the, uh, initial easement agreements, what states, what can be there, what can't be there. And their answer was, these were done so long ago, it states they can't find any information. So.
Did they say that the, your land used right now is incompatible with the new project?
No.
No.
I have had no communication with anybody from ATC property. The only people I've had was a subcontractor out of Michigan that did uh, some kind of testing and analyzing on the property. I don't know if they actually did the borings or not. And I had a, uh, communication. It seems like he must be a property headhunter that he's out giving people, he was, he was some sort of a subcontractor out of Georgia, very nice gentleman. But he was just basically trying to move things along and saying, can you get the property, uh, material out of the way for us? And I'm going, who are you? Why? There's nothing, there's nothing in writing. There's nothing. So.
Okay. All right. Well, appreciate the comment.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Oh, something else? Let's off the record.
Party to the case, actually.
I
See, CD two.
Oh, that's the one. Okay, I thought, yeah, I thought I recognized. Okay, well, okay. I asked before, but. Yeah, so just on the record, yeah, so I, that's why I was inquiring whether this person was a connected with the case already. So I think it's, uh, C D, C M D M Lily LLC, which is a party in the case. So we don't, we don't take public comments from parties. Uh, the parties participate in the party session. Uh, at this point, though, I think we already have that comment on the transcript, but I just wanted to note uh, that, that, that's what happened, so. Okay. Uh, any other public comments here today? No, um, it doesn't look like we have any else, one else on Zoom. Uh, is there someone on Zoom that has not spoken who does want a chance to speak? No, not seeing one. All right. Well, thanks, everyone, for joining us. Uh, we will reconvene at six P M and take new comments from new people. So thanks for coming and giving us your comment now. Like I said, I'll be forwarding all these comments to the commissioners. So they'll read them, whether they're handed to me, spoken at the hearing, or submitted online or by mail. Commissioners will read them, so I appreciate everyone giving your input to us. Thanks. And we're adjourned.
I'll take that back.
Well, I'll take that back if you don't want to sort of get it again, so.
Yeah.
I get my pull.
I would.
I have written comments discarded, because I had the words, I'm pretty much, I'm pretty much.